Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mrs. Oginski, roll call, please.
Bobby Braun. Catherine Solan.
Here.
Jill Maddick Nelson.
Here.
J.D. Schrader.
Here.
Dr. Dave Bardo.
Here.
Danny Pyatt.
Here.
Angie Schreiber.
Here.
Scott Peterson.
Here.
Kristin Matt Miller.
Here.
Okay, moving on to letter D, public comments. We have one person signed up, and I just want to remind, the one person signed up is Gail Zabrowski. I'm not going to take the time to read all of what we normally read for regular board meetings, but just remember you have five minutes to speak, and the timer will be up on the screen. And remember to keep it to an item on the agenda. Gail, you're more than welcome to come up. To the microphone.
Don't start it. I want to do some thanks first, okay?
Well, that would be part of your five minutes, unfortunately.
Oh, come on. I want to, I want to be nice. I want to thank Glenda.
Can you speak into the microphone so everybody can hear you?
Oh, I know.
Yeah, you have to move.
Can you hear me here? Whoa.
Just hold it like, yeah, there you go.
I complained about this last time. I thought, whoa, because we couldn't hear back there. But I thought, they can hear everything, and I can't, you know, so, can you hear me okay? All right, all right, that's good, good. I want to thank Glenda quick for taking me through the schools like I had asked, and I told her, talked to her about organization. I thank Jake for taking me for the junior high. Thank you very much. So I'm going to go through this quick, and I'm going to have to go real fast because I only got five minutes. So I'm going to get each of you to speak.
We can pass it down.
This was made by some community members, members of the community, whichever way you want to put it. Okay? We'll pass them all to you. Okay? All right, so I'm going to watch. See this?
You're addressing the board, Gail.
Okay, I just want to show the picture.
Yeah, but you addressed the board.
This is the University of Wisconsin, built in 1848. Done with that. Okay. To start, okay. We're talking about the schooling in this survey. Okay, question. Who is the task force? I've been questioned, if we are the task force, we don't have all our information in yet, okay? What I'm seeing in the newspaper having is signed by the school board, which is not the Facility Task Force. One that we have a problem with is declining student enrollment. Another one is declining population. So that's part of the survey, and I'm just going to do something. If you get your information through the DPI, Census Bureau, and the local schools, that's where you get your information from, so you know how to get it. This is from the Census Bureau. Two thousand, population in Antigo was eighty, eight thousand four hundred ninety-two. Two thousand ten, eight hundred, eight thousand two hundred eighteen. Two thousand twenty, eight thousand sixty-five. Twenty twenty-four, eight thousand thirty-seven. Speculation for two twenty thirty, seven thousand eight hundred sixty-five projected, but not a fact. Okay, there's nineteen thousand four hundred ninety-one in Langley County. Future growth, United States, is families coming up with zero to one child. Now, at this point in history, before today, we are all, we are below population growth. I used to work for the Census Bureau. I gave you this paper. It's made up by community people. It's questions on it, and you as a public and the board are asked to research and answer these questions truthfully. You can bring them to the next meeting. All the people should do the same thing. They're going to know what's going on if you check with the people I told you to check with, and that's DPI, Census Bureau, and the school. Because the research I've done so far, my numbers aren't coming out. Okay. The DPI uses the third Friday of 2023 as the amount of children you have. That's what you get paid on. So it says, you'll see that right on there. That's the numbers that the state uses, okay? So we are asking you and demanding you, as citizens of Langley County, that you fill these out, because we're going to get them filled out and by the public, and if you don't fill them out, it is going into the newspaper, so the people do. We need to inform the public honestly. We worked hard to get this board, and all we want is honesty and not pushy and push your agenda. We want honesty, what needs to be done. So this is what I will remind you. This needs to be filled out by you and the public. Okay? I'm keeping it, oh, I got seven seconds. Oh, my goodness. We are weighted at, out of four hundred and twenty-one districts, we are two hundred and sixty. Okay, the average state school is four, two thousand forty-six. Ours is two thousand thirty-seven. And so I want to close with this. Parents, what they're feeling is not the buildings. They're feeling about the education. I've talked to different people. Some have pulled their children out of school. Some are pulling their kids out of school, and some are thinking about pulling their kids' schools out. So there is distress.
Thank you, Gail. I haven't caught you off at that point.
Okay. I thank you very much for your time, and please do fill out that report. We're asking you seriously about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail.
Thank you.
I appreciate that so much. Thank you for all your hard work, too. Item number two, board action, new hires. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I don't have my language in front of me, but I can, I move the board to prove the new hires as presented.
Motion has been made by Kristin to approve the new board, the new hires as presented. Would you like to speak to your motion, please, Kristin? Any discussion of the motion on the floor to approve the two new hires that are presented before us tonight? One more time, any other, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, you can take your voting device out. Make sure it's your name on the back. And the vote is now open. Would anyone like to change their vote? The vote is now closed, and the motion carries. Item number, letter B, school force logging. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board accept the bid from Jacobs Enterprises LLC in the amount of sixteen thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars.
Motion has been made by Angie to accept the bid from Jacobs Enterprises LLC in the amount of sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. Would you like to speak to your motion?
No.
Are there any questions to the motion on the floor? Yes, Bobby?
I would just like to know the rationale on taking the higher bid, even though it's not by a lot of money.
Thank you, Mr. Leidman.
It's a bid for what they're going to pay us for the harvesting of the lumber, so we're getting in a profit.
Timber sale.
Yep.
That's good. Jim?
Just one question. The budget fiscal impact shows increase of sixteen nine nine five, but the motion is sixteen nine five five. So I'm wondering if it's a type of one, one or the other?
On your topic summary sheet.
Yes, it's nine, nine five five, not nine nine five. Sorry about that.
So the motion reflects the nine five five.
Yep, the motion's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Good catch. Any other questions? All right, hearing no discussion, your voting device is now open. You may vote. Would anyone like to change their vote? Vote is now closed, and the motion carries. Moving on to item number three, new business, Facility Task Force survey results presentation. I'll turn this presentation over to Mrs. Oginski.
So we have Lori Miller with us, with the Donovan Group, who will begin our presentation, and Perry, Perry Huber will be joining us in just a few moments. He is across the hall wrapping up some other survey results for some local school districts as well, so he will be joining us in person to go a little further into the report, but we'll turn it over to Lori at this time.
Hello, everybody. It's nice to see you. Our purpose tonight with the survey is, I guess I want to start by reminding everybody that we're in the pre-referendum planning process. And so the Facilities Task Force, as a reminder, has been meeting now for, we had an initial charge from the board last spring. A year ago spring, we had Facilities Task Force come together all last summer. And that task force gave us really good direction and helped their charge about saying, we've taken a good look at our facility needs, and we think that we need to focus and prioritize the elementary school. From that point, the district has engaged Blue Design Group as an architect, and we have continued our work with what we've been calling the Facilities Task Force 2.0. And that task force has come to quick conclusions after hearing the needs assessment from the Blue Design Group, that the elementary schools continue to be the higher priority, and they would like to see the board consider building a new elementary school. And that would mean that the three existing elementary schools would be decommissioned to some extent. We want to gain the interest and support from the community through the survey to see if the task force is on the right track, to give good information to the board tonight about where you might want to go and next steps. So with that, we tested, you know, what are, what is the support for needs beyond the elementary schools? So looking at also some of the more pressing facility needs at the middle school and high school. So again, tonight, we're going to hear the survey results. This is your opportunity as a board to ask questions. And our goal is to learn from the survey about what our community has identified as priorities and what they're willing to support moving forward. So the goal tonight is to be good listeners, ask good questions, but there's no action tonight. All right, we just want to be clear, no action. We just want to seek understanding tonight. So with that, I do want to remind everybody what's our why, and this is the conversation that we had at the Facilities Task Force. And so I'm going to pause, and mainly do this because I'm trying five years at a time. But I'm asking you, what's your why when you put this Facilities Task Force together? What, what, what drew you to that? What's the, what's the rationale? What's our why for doing this work?
I think it was back either in January or February of last year, and at one of those meetings, I brought up that I felt that we needed to do a plan for our building needs, in that we needed to look five years out, ten years out, and even farther. And out of that, the board supported creating a task force, which Mr. Pyatt started as the board president. And after they came back with a ref, ref, excuse me, with a report that stated that we should build a new elementary school, then Pastor Pyatt went on to start what he called Task Force 2.0, which is what we're currently in, looking at what we would need to do to upgrade the three elementary schools. Is that cost near what it would cost to build a new school? And basically, that's where we're at. We're about a week out of the board making a decision whether we're going to go to referendum or not. And basically, that's how it started. And, and then I want to say, going before I stop talking, which sometimes takes time, I want to thank Jake for all the work he's done, and Angie as our head of building and grounds. They've made this happen, and I want to thank you for it.
Can I just take it one step further and say that our why is to make sure that our kids have a fighting chance with the same resources, the same opportunities as everyone across not only the state, the nation, to make sure they have the same chance to learn as everybody else?
Thank you for that. Anybody else?
I just, historical information to share, too, is that this started with the previous superintendent, Dr. Sprague, and then has been continued with our current superintendent, Ms. Oginski.
So again, tonight I see that Mr. Hibner has arrived, so he's getting set up to share the results, and I'm excited for you to hear them and to get all your questions addressed. So again, tonight, no action. We're seeking to understand, but our timeline is, if we are going to go to referendum, our goal is to give you these, these results tonight so that you have time over the next couple of weeks and month to decide as a board, what do you want to do with this information, along in conjunction with recommendations that are coming from the Facilities Task Force. So that's, that's the goal tonight, is to get your questions answered. So you can come to, come to board meetings over the next few weeks and month to decide if you want to put a resolution on the ballot in November. So with that, I got you set up so that you're ready to share the results.
Thanks, Lori. First of all, thank you, everyone, for being understanding about my evening. This is the third presentation of the night, so, anyway, the other two were done in your classroom across the hallways, so. Hopefully, my voice won't crack too much. I've been doing a lot of talking, so. Good evening. It's great to be with you tonight. My name's Perry Hibner and the lead survey strategist for the Donovan Group. I'm excited to share the results and analysis from the recent community survey we administered for the school district of Antigo. And I will say, my, my tie-in with Antigo is I used to be the sports editor for the Wisconsin State Journal in Madison. And I remember every time we were dealing with the Kentucky Derby, the Preakness, or the Belmont Stakes, we had to point out that D. Wayne Lucas was born here. All right, if you could go ahead and move on to the next slide, that would be great, so. Thank you. Perfect. All right, before we get into the slides, I wanted to provide a little background information, but we'll leave it there so people can read it. Over the past three years, we have worked with approximately fifty districts administering surveys, including staff climate, student engagement, parent satisfaction, childcare, and various types of community surveys, most related to potential referendums. Over the past seven months, we have done thirteen community surveys related to facilities or operations for Wisconsin Public School Districts. I also want to note that I am a huge proponent of engaging stakeholders, and a survey is one of many tools to do so, and results in what we call two-way communication, which is the best kind of engagement. Before I joined the Donovan Group, I was the director of communications for the Middleton Cross Plains Area School District near Madison. We took pride in our engagement efforts and surveyed staff, students, families, and the community often. I also believe surveys are important for residents who don't have children in our schools, as it allows them to learn more about what a school district is doing and provide feedback, and these are the people we normally don't hear from. You can keep it right there. We often are asked about scientific versus convenience samples, and some wonder if a convenience sample provides valid results. Examples of scientific surveys are presidential and gubernatorial polls, where often five hundred to a thousand people are select, pre-selected to participate. In a convenience sample like this one, we ask that every adult resident within the school district's boundaries participates. We did so by producing a postcard that was mailed to each household and included a unique URL along with a QR code. With any survey, the higher their participation rate, the more accurate the results will be. A good completion rate for community surveys is typically around fifteen to twenty percent of a district's student population. I'll talk more about participation rates in a bit. The data in the report and what we will cover is solid. Finally, a reminder that we are supporters of public education and are certainly happy when the results from a survey are positive. However, our number one goal is that the results are accurate. Okay, we can move to the next one. You will see that we kept the survey open for a little more than two weeks, and we closed it on Friday night at midnight. This is a pretty quick turnaround, everybody, so. We had six hundred and seventy-two individuals complete the survey, which is nearly thirty-four percent of your student population. We would also like to see about ten percent of registered voters take the survey. There were nearly nine thousand voters in the municipalities that make up the school district in the 2020 presidential election, so we fell a little short of that goal. We can move to the next one. We provide two sets of data for nearly every question or statement, all respondents and a comparison group. It was noted on the previous slide that the comparison group is made up of district residents who are not current parents of preschool or school-aged students, employees, or students. We had three hundred and thirteen respondents in that group, which works out to slightly more than forty-six percent of those who completed the survey. That's, that's very high, and that's good. It's important because of the third grouping we provide, a weighted one. Why do we use a twenty-five seventy-five ratio for that grouping? Because in any school district, sixty-five to seventy-five percent of eligible voters don't have a direct connection to your schools. If we didn't do a weighting, the results of residents who have children in your schools or work for the district would be overemphasized relative to the percentage of the voting population they make up. One other thing I'll also note about the weighted group, because I got asked during my last presentation, while we really wanted staff members to take the survey, when we do the weighting, we remove any staff members who don't live in the school district community. Because as much as we want to hear from them, unless you can all get them to move here before November, their, their opinion on this doesn't matter from a voting standpoint, okay? I mentioned previously that nine thousand school district residents voted in the November 2020 election. With approximately two thousand students, that means the district likely has about fourteen hundred households with another, I'm going to guess, four hundred staff members. Even if we assign two adults to each family and staff household, that means fewer than thirty-five percent of those voters in 2020 had a direct affiliation with the district. In addition, we found that in the April 2024 elections where we did surveys for districts, that a seventy-five twenty-five, or even in one case, an eighty to twenty percentage was more reflective of what the votes actually looked like when, when the election occurred. So I want it to be conservative. The other, other thing I'll note, which is not part of my script, is when we're dealing with counties where they're more maybe fiscally conservative or vote more red, and that's not, that's not any sort of judgment, it's just the reality. I think we need to be more conservative in our approaches than assuming that it's, because again, I don't, I don't think it's a Republican or Democratic issue. I think, I think some people are just more fiscally conservative in their approach to school district referendums. All right, next one. All right, the survey opened with five demographic questions, which I didn't include in the report, or in, or in the report, but not in the presentation, and two communication statements that help us desegregate the data and provide the district with vital information about the best ways to communicate with stakeholders. And then we get into the meat of the survey. And again, you can read this, but I have a script that I follow. More than twenty-two percent of all respondents and more than eighteen percent of the comparison group are satisfied with the Unified School District of Antigo. A no opinion option was included, and had it been removed, the percentages would have likely increased by four to six points among all respondents and the comparison group. These numbers are quite a bit lower than we see in other districts and would normally suggest the no options and tax impacts would be supported.
Can you, so when we're looking at this, it's more important to look at the comparison group? You're saying more important to look at the comparison group than it is to look at the all?
When we get, when we get to the option numbers, that's where I'd look at the weighted groups, okay? And, and here, I want to show you both, but the reality is, is that I don't know that one is more important than another with things that aren't dealing with what you might be considering for a referendum question, if that makes sense, okay? So I'll pause when we get to those option numbers, and I'll focus more on the weighted group, if that makes sense, okay? So again, as I was saying, those numbers are quite a bit lower than we see, and would suggest that it'd be hard to have something supported. The fact there was good support from all respondents, the comparison group, and the weighted groups for some of the offerings below is encouraging. Additional engagement efforts over the next year would be one way to raise the percentage of those who strongly agree or agree with this statement, and also have a positive impact on any referendum efforts. I want to be clear, another way to look at satisfaction results is they give a decent barometer of the high end of potential support for a referendum question, because it is rare for individuals who are dissatisfied with a district to support any option, regardless if it is the right amount or the right solution, or even if there is no tax increase. So what I will say as a former communication director is I do think this is important. And I think, long-term, as a district, you're going to have to work on improving the satisfaction scores among all of your community, okay? I mean, right now, I know the focus is on the referendum, but the fact that people are dissatisfied for a variety of reasons, which the anecdotal qualitative open-ended results share, is something that we need to dig deeper and figure out why and how we can address it. Okay, next slide. All right, more than eighty-eight percent of all respondents and more than eighty-seven percent of the comparison group indicated they were well-informed or had some familiarity with the district's facility needs. This does indicate the district has done a very good job of educating the community about its facility challenges. However, it also presents an opportunity. Is more than eleven percent of all respondents and more than twelve percent of the comparison group have no familiarity with the process? The district should continue to engage stakeholders in the coming months, as more information will help residents with their decision. And I would, I would argue, not like we know who took the survey, but people who select no familiarity here are probably more likely to say probably not to a referendum question than they're going to say we support it. Because they want to learn more. Next slide, please. In most cases, the percentage of respondents who strongly agree or agree with addressing facility needs at any level now tends to be higher than the support for specific solutions after a referendum date is announced or once dollar amounts and tax impact are provided. This statement often sets a ceiling for support for specific solutions. Look at those numbers. Nearly eighty-one percent of all respondents and nearly seventy-seven percent of the comparison group strongly agree or agree that the district's facility needs at the elementary level must be addressed now. While when we weighted, it works out to more than seventy-eight percent of the weighted group, which, again, now we can, we'll start, I've got the weighted one here, that's the one that I think is the most important. This bodes well for the district if the right option and tax impact are determined, although I want to stress, it should be noted that some may have supported this statement, but lightly, likely want the district to address the needs within its budget. You know, we think it's important, but you need to take care of it. We're not going to. Next one. In most cases, the percentage of, of respondents who strongly agree or agree with a statement where a referendum date is included tends to be higher than support for specific solutions or once a dollar amount or tax impact is provided, although not as high as the general question about addressing urgent needs. Again, this statement often sets another ceiling for support for specific solutions. Notably, more than sixty-eight percent of all respondents and nearly sixty-three percent of the comparison group definitely or probably would support a capital building referendum question on the November 2024 ballot, and when we weighted, it's more than sixty-six percent. These are very encouraging, and again, as I stated before, if you're wondering, why did it drop from the last one? Now people know, oh, I'm taking this survey, and they're thinking about something in November of this year. So I was thinking you were going to do it internally, and you should address it. Next one, please. Okay? So we wanted to include this one, and I'll get into it more for a sec, in a second. The statement gives the district an idea of whether residents support the idea of closing the three elementary schools and building a new one. A respondent could have indicated previously that they support addressing facility needs at the elementary level, but not support the plan, either because they oppose closing the three neighborhood elementary schools or because they are concerned about the cost of building a new one. Notably, more than sixty-seven percent of all respondents and nearly sixty-one percent of the comparison group strongly agree or agree they would vote yes on a referendum question to build a new elementary school and close those three current elementary schools, while when we weighted, it's sixty-four percent. This suggests there is strong support for, for the solution. This suggests there is strong support for, for the solution. But I would tell you, work still needs to be done, so residents, especially families with younger children, understand why this solution makes the most sense going forward. Because obviously, they're the, some of them are the ones who would say, no, we still want our child going to east, west, or north. Right? Next one, please. Okay? This district gives, or this statement gives the district an idea of whether residents support the facility's plan to address the most urgent capital maintenance needs at the middle, high, middle school and high school. A respondent might support a November 2024 capital referendum question, but be opposed to a plan that includes addressing capital maintenance. So they might prefer the first part of this, what we talked about with the elementary school, but not the second. Notably, more than 73% of all respondents and more than 69% of the comparison group strongly agree or agree they would vote yes on a referendum question to address the most urgent capital maintenance needs at the middle school and the high school. Meanwhile, when we weighted, it's nearly 73% agree, strongly agreed or agreed with the statement. Now, what's interesting is there was more support for this than there was for the elementary solution. It's a little softer support, though, as you can see, fewer respondents who strongly agreed compared to the last one. It likely also means that families of older students are supportive of a new elementary school, but not at the expense of work being done at the other schools. Again, this still bodes well for you. So one way to think of it, as I was just talking with one district, it said, oh, we should split our questions. And I would tell you, that would be the wrong choice here, and maybe Lori's already talked with you about it. Because what ends up happening, I think, with districts who say, well, would you like an elementary school? And then would you also separately like to do capital maintenances? Guess what your high school families do? They vote yes, middle school families, they vote yes for the one that helps their children, and unless they have a child at the elementary school, they vote no for the other one. Meanwhile, your elementary families might vote yes for both, but they might say from a tax impact standpoint, or with the, younger than that, I can only afford the first one right now, even though I know what the other one's needed, so I'll wait. Yeah, I hope that all makes sense, but I just wanted to put that out there in case Lori hadn't, or just to reemphasize it. All right, next one. And I know this is what you all wanted to see, was how, how the numbers were. So again, reminded everybody, we tested three numbers, 46 million, 54 million, and 61 million. So, I'm giving you time to read that, so you can process those numbers. So nearly 65% of all respondents and more than 58% of the comparison group would support a $46 million capital referendum question to build a new elementary school. And you can see what the tax impact would be. Meanwhile, more than 61% of the weighted group would support this referendum question. What I would tell you, since I got the question before, is back in the day, I think districts oftentimes looked at the comparison and said, let's go with the most conservative approach possible. So if we know that 58% of the comparison group is going to support this, we have some wiggle room in case, let's say, inflation goes up, or other economic factors turn in a way that people who said probably yes now, say, a few say no in November. But those are really solid numbers. Again, I don't know if Lori used the word, I feel a little bit, I'm kind of prefacing what the next slide's going to look like, you have a bit of a conundrum. Because the reality is, is this is probably the safest one, but it also might lead to some of your middle and high school families not supporting it because they're disappointed that the work isn't being done at the schools where their children attend. Okay? So we can go on to the next one then, for 54 million. Okay? So nearly 59% of all respondents and more than 52% of the comparison group would support that $54 million referendum question, and that still does what we've talked about, builds a new elementary school, but it also addresses the most urgent immediate capital maintenance needs at the middle school and the high school. And then when we weighted it, it worked out to 57% would support this referendum question. Support dropped about 4 to 6% for each group from the previous statement. It also is clear that while a large majority of district families, especially with middle and high school students, are supportive of the plan, there was a drop-off of support among residents and the school community. And again, we can assume it's tax impact-wise. Okay? Next one, please. Okay, so the third option, we wanted to find, okay, not only our urgent capital maintenance, but what about some of our deferred capital maintenance that helps us get out a few years and get, get in front of it? Because it's hard to stay in front, right? So nearly 54% of all respondents and nearly 47% of the comparison group supported that $61 million capital referendum question, and when we weighted it, it was just over 52%. Support dropped about 5% for each group from the previous statement. It is clear that residents with a direct affiliation with the school district believe $61 million is warranted, but the rest of the community believes the cost may be too great to support. So again, the challenge with this one would be, I would say it's really a Bitcoin flip, in knowing how fiscally conservative the area is, you know, I mean, and unknowns about the economy, 52% a month from now might be 48%. You know, on a weighted one, which again, we argue is the most accurate one. Next one, please. Okay. So this statement was provided for anyone who selected probably not or definitely not for each of the three previous statements, which showed project costs and tax impact. About 131 responded saw this statement, actually, it's not about 131, it is 131, and 317 options were selected. I, it is encouraging that none of the nine options reached the 20% threshold. The cost of projects is too high and the tax impact of each option is too great, had similar scores from all respondents in the comparison group. Which is what we would expect, is someone who thinks the tax impact is too high will likely also be opposed to the cost of the projects. In most community surveys where this statement is included, a much larger percentage of the comparison group usually doesn't understand why funds are needed when enrollment is declining. So, while all respondents are likely to be more opposed to closing schools, the fact this didn't happen here means the same discussions can occur with all potential voters when you're out informing them in the coming months. The district should use this information gathered from this statement to determine talking points for presentations and informational sessions, to better educate the community about your needs, the process you use to identify the needs and what you're prioritizing, and the solution the school board determines to move forward with. The most common themes among those who selected others were staffing cuts before asking for money for facilities, mistrust of the school board, disappointment, disappointment facilities weren't addressed years ago, used capital maintenance budget, spend more money on staff salaries, taxes are too high, mistrust state funds won't materialize and will result in a higher tax impact, and frustration over other counties, your other county elementary schools that were previously closed. I don't think any of those are probably, you know, a surprise to people, you probably hear that out in the community, but again, these are those other things that need to be talked about. Okay? You, I mean, I'm, I'm a big fan of just, you gotta be, you gotta be open with folks and explain, why did we close those schools? Why is it, why was it the right thing? You know, looking at your taxes versus other ones. People sometimes don't want to hear it, but, I mean, here's one, here's one reality. Districts that aren't investing in themselves, their families and kids go elsewhere. All right? And there was one person in there, more than one, who said, well, if the community's not going to invest in this, I'll move my kids to Medford. Or I'll move my kids to Rhinelander, which seems kind of far away, but you know, I think, you know, and again, sometimes you can say, well, some people who might be listening to this might say, well, that's an idle threat. But the reality is, is communities that don't have strong vibrant schools, they're struggling. Right? So, I mean, that's one thing we want the community to understand. This isn't something, whatever your decision is, you're not going to take it lightly, but the reality is, is, you know, it's important to invest in school communities, and I know this isn't operationally, but they all go together. We haven't gotten enough support from the state over the last 15 to 20 years, and so a lot of districts are in the same boat, especially if they're declining enrollment. All right, you can go ahead and move to the next one, sorry, I didn't save for that one then. Okay. A couple of final things. We included three qualitative or open-ended questions or statements in the survey. How would you describe the district to someone who is unfamiliar with, with it? Please provide additional information to the district and school board as it considers next steps to address the district's long-range facility needs. And depending on how some respondents replied to one of the demographic questions, please list what would need to be resolved for your children to enroll or re-enroll in the school district of Antigo. Now, before I go over those themes, I just want to say one thing, I told Glenda this when I first got here at 4 o'clock this afternoon, which is that what we find when we offer open-ended questions, because they're not required, is people who are either really, really happy with the district or really, really unhappy are the ones who usually take the most time to fill those out. Because this is their chance for everybody to, you know, whoever's looking at this to see them. Right now, it's me, you know, but I'm just saying, it's their chance, so I went through all of the comments, and there were a lot. Okay? The first question received, more than 850 responses, which represents nearly 53% of all respondents. That is 10 to 20% more than we typically see on community surveys. The most common themes were wide, wide range of perspectives on the quality of the district, positive and negative, I just want to make sure I've got the right things here, sorry about that, I'm going to just check one other thing, somehow that feels redundant to me, as I've done so many of these, but it may not be. Sorry. Everybody behind me can see what I'm doing. All right. Mismanagement and leadership issues, a belief that there's a declining academic performance, high turnover and low morale, mixed perceptions and efforts to improve, political interference in education, and community and parental dissatisfaction. And then, in the report, it kind of explains each of those things more. But those were the themes that, when I say themes, they have to appear a lot when you get 850 responses, or, I said that wrong, 465 responses, I was right, that was from a different district, I apologize. All right, next one, which was the last thing on the survey, which is, again, additional information for the school board to consider. There is a need for improved facilities, desire for budget, better education quality, concern over taxes, distrust of the school board and administration, impact on community growth, and calls for a lot of unique engagement and communication in the coming months and going forward, even after a referendum, whether it's successful or not, to continue to tell people what's going on. And then finally, because the district really wanted to find out, because again, like a lot of districts, you're a net negative open enrollment. Okay, for those people who are going elsewhere, or for that matter, if they said that their child's going to a parochial school, you know, is, what might be done to bring those children back? Because obviously, every child we get has a positive impact on the amount of money we get from the state. Okay? And, things that were brought up were, do more with behavioral issues and discipline, we want to see better building conditions in facilities, higher educational quality and standards, we want to see staff retention, you know, and again, that's, you know, a lot of times that boils down to, again, if you, you know, it's hard if you can't give much for raises because you just don't have much money to work operationally, and then be transparent about all the decisions you're making as a group and the administration is making. And those were the, those were the qualitative open-ended ones. Now, I know Lori had to cover for me for about 15 minutes before I got here, but I will, I will start, close with this. See, that's how long it's been, I thought I was starting, I'm doing another presentation. And that is, it's really important that you take time to process, process, because it's, there's a lot in a report, and I just went through a bunch of things with you. You know, I don't know of a school district that ever says, yeah, we saw the report, we're going to make our determination tonight. Now, having said that, a lot of districts want to, want to decide what they're going to put on the ballot, long before the end of August, because the sooner you do it, that gives you more time to start kind of getting, getting prepared. It doesn't mean you're going to start doing presentations in July, because people aren't paying attention, but it allows you to put a calendar together of all the community events you want to do over the course of October, September and October. It allows you to plan what you, a mailing, if you want to put something together that, you know, with the construction firm about, you know, showing people what this might look like and stuff, whatever you decide. But I think, you know, I think that it's important. The other thing I often get asked, so I just want to be preemptive here, is, well, Perry, you do this all the time, what would you suggest we do? And I'll tell you, trust your data, that's what I'd suggest you do. You know, the, the data, you know, that, that's one reason why we did the survey. Where some districts make a mistake is they don't trust their data. They want, they really wanted something that the data didn't support, and they go with something else. The other thing is I'll often get asked, is there a number between? Well, you know, if you're nervous about 54 million, you know, you could work with Jake and Glenda and Kelly and everybody else about, is 50 million an option? Because again, we know, we can figure, and I can figure out those numbers and tell you, if we'd asked that number, what would it be? You know, how much support would we have for, so we get some of the capital maintenance done. I'm not saying that's the right choice, I'm just saying those are all sorts of things you can think about, but you want to have some time to think about them. And with that, I'll take questions, because I know it was a lot. And hopefully, my eyes haven't started to gloss over at this point, so.
Can you give, or maybe collaboratively give, um, some insight on how the, the survey was, the questions were developed?
Yep.
Who had involvement in that?
You bet, so.
Speaking to transparency, and I think historically, there's a perception that surveys were sent out to get feedback, but it was a skewed survey to ask the questions that were wanting the responses to be, so if you could just give some background.
Yep, yep. So, what we do with any survey, whether it's for, I mean, any community survey, whether it's focused on operations or in this case, facilities, is we, we take others that we have put together and we put a template. So, so the, which we didn't include in the presentation, but those communication and demographic questions look very much like what other districts do. But if we don't ask those, if we don't ask the demographic questions, we can't tell you, like, what non, non-district families believe versus district families. I mean, we don't know who they are, but we at least know which groups they fall into. With the demographic questions, they're really important because they will help the district team determine, I know this isn't quite what you're asking, but I'll get to it, they will help them decide the best way to reach each of those different audiences. Because the one thing, I always tell them this before we start, and I think you probably remember this, the one thing I can guarantee you about your communications is that your families who don't have children in your schools get their information from the district differently than the families who do. So it's important that you tailor your messages and your information and the way you get it out to people based on the audience that most, that uses that tool, those tools. Um, and then it was, I mean, we went back and forth a number of times, and this was, we started kind of late in the process, and it's not a criticism, it's just, normally we take about two months with a district to put a referendum, a survey together, a community, community survey together. I, remind me, Glenda, I think this was probably three or four weeks that we probably worked on it. And again, there was a lot of back and forth, and there was a lot of pushback here and there, you know, there was, you know, at one point, and again, I'm not saying this was, you know, I wondered if we were only going to ask about, about the elementary, and I'm like, I don't think you can do that, because if I'm a parent with a middle school or high school child, I'm like, why aren't we doing anything there, especially since your middle school is older than your three elementary schools? And I think, you know, so again, I think it's important that we included all that stuff in there. The other thing is, you don't want to ask something you don't want to get the answer to. You know, we truly wanted to find out, what can the community be willing to support? And then also, and so the way we ask these questions is we sort of, and this kind of expands on this a little bit, we funnel it down. Because if you put the dollar amount right there, it sort of turns people off and they start thinking just about the dollar amount. We wanted to find out, do you really think Antigo has urgent facility needs? Yeah, we do, especially at the elementary level. Do, do you really think we need to do something with capital maintenance at the middle and high school? Yeah, we do. So then, you know, so again, what that tells me, when I do a lot of these, is that your community knows something needs to be done, the question just becomes what and how much? And that's hopefully what we were able to get to a little bit with those three options. Did that help? Did it ask?
Yes, thank you.
You bet.
When you guys did this.
John, what was that?
Uh, when you guys made this survey, did you think about, as a separate question, well, what if we build something on for a Boys and Girls Club and a YMCA? We didn't ask about that, and I guess probably because we didn't want to drive the price up, but I don't, I don't know, did you guys talk about that at all, or is that just off the table?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Glenda, I don't remember it coming up, but I think part of it is, I, and again, I looked at your referendum results on DPI's website from 1990 on. So I know what historically it's been like for the school district. You know, you had what, one really pass? $5 million? I mean, these are much bigger numbers. Now granted, a long time since that $5 million passed, but this is new, this is new for this community to see these kind of numbers. So, the fact that there was support for them is, I think, really good. I also think you get to a point, though, where it's, you're like, when you're, John, when you're talking about driving costs up, some people look at us, you know, if you'd asked for 75 million, let's say that's what it would have cost to do something at the Boys and Girls Club, people might have looked and said, are you nuts? And then gone back, 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 and gone to the other questions and say, they so turned me off with that, I'm going to say no to the other ones. We did work with one district on Alaska that asked a question like that two years ago. And, but what helped there is they actually had private funding that was going to help[1677.25] And, but what helped there is, they actually had private funding that was gonna help reduce the cost of the overall project as a result. So, so it was gonna be a win for families, but not at the total cost for all taxpayers. So, maybe a little hint for, if you needed Boys and Girls Club, the, if, I don't know if there's private funding around here to do that, but maybe if it's a combination, that might help, so.
How, so if we just did the, build the school, how long do you have to, let's say it passes, how long do you have to wait before you could run the other immediate and long-term maintenance needs? Can you just do it the next year, or is that a?
You're, you're allowed two referendum questions a year.
Uh?
A year. It does, doesn't matter, yep. Now, next year, keep in mind, because it's an odd numbered year, really the only, I would never, I would never advise a district to do a referendum question any other time in Wisconsin, other than the November election or the April election.
Right.
Because, and also, I think it's the right thing for you with your community. And that's what I always said in Middleton. We're gonna ask in November, because at the end of the day, if people say no, that's what the community wanted, and if people say yes, people who said no can understand the community supported the bulk, because you get your highest turnout then. So, but I also think, I mean, strategically, higher the turnout, usually the more successful school referendums are. The most successful ones, I'll, I know I, you're getting ready to ask me something else, but the most successful school referendums, if you look historically in Wisconsin, the rate is highest in November of a presidential election, or a gubernatorial election, next highest in an April election, much lower in a February or now August election, because it used to be September, and lowest if you do a special election. But you can ask two questions a year. Either one operational, one capital, two operational, and you don't have to, two capital, doesn't it? They don't have to be on the same, same ballot either, but you're only allowed two.
If you lose an operational referendum, does it affect how much money you can take? Wasn't there like a threatened penalty from the legislature a couple of years ago, that if you lose a referendum of some sort, you can't take your revenue ceiling increase or something?
So, I, I try to be an expert on everything if I can. I'm not an expert there, but I can tell you, when we worked with Northlake, they were one of the districts, because they lost the operational referendum last year, that didn't get the three hundred and twenty-five dollar revenue limit increase. So, you may be right, I'm not sure it's exactly for that reason. I, I wouldn't want to put words out there that aren't true, but I know they lost a referendum question, and so as a result, they didn't get year one of the three twenty-five revenue limit.
And it was an operating referendum?
It was an operational, yeah, yeah. I'm happy to answer more.
Will you go back to the questions? Just to the?
The three option ones?
Yeah.
Yeah, do you mind putting those back up? Why don't we, do you want to start with the first one, or the?
Yeah.
All right, all right, so there's the first one, and again, that's just for the elementary school, so.
What do you think? I mean, do you guys want to talk about this a little?
Well, I'll, I'll just say, that my original statement, I did not take the survey. I, my original statement, from the very beginning of this, when we decided to go to a task force, I said, "I would support as a board member, and I would vote in the election for whatever the task force came up with." And, they're talking referendum. Now, I'm gonna go back to what you said about the Boys and Girls Club, and the other entities that may be interested. I think what happened is that the task force focused in on this solution that's up on the screen right now, which was to build a new elementary school. And I think, in their minds, stuff like, for the middle school, high school, was secondary, and then in a possible third, you know, as I talked originally, five years, ten years and over, that as a school district, we should take care of our schools first. And if the solution is to build a elementary school, and that's it, that's what I feel that I would support. And I think that's what the task force wants. At the same time, that doesn't say, three years from now, we do the one that was twenty-four million, which was to do stuff at the high school and the middle school.
Fifty-four million, by the way. So it was, so it would've been eight million, it would've been eight million for capital maintenance, is what it would've been.
Okay, so, eight million?
Yep.
I'm sorry. But, okay. And as we go out, if we're looking to do stuff here on this facility, that's when I see us looking to build stuff for gymnastics team, and wrestling team, and Boys and Girls Club, that we, we look at a separate, and YMCA, we look at separate stuff down the road, because that school is what we need to do. And that's just my opinion. And I, and to be honest, I hope that's what we settle on as our referendum, because that's our biggest need. And that will draw people to come back and people to stay. That's my opinion.
Do you want to go to the next one, then, since John had asked us to see all three? So again, I just wanted to be clear, because Dave had mentioned, so you can see the difference, is eight million, and that would be used towards the capital maintenance at the other two schools, so. And I know, I just, for anybody who watches, or is, you know, in the audience, stuff like that, I don't want them to hear twenty-four million, because that wasn't, and think, oh, there's twenty-four million in capital maintenance? What's going on? So?
That's, that's my mathematical dyslexia, apparently.
That's okay. My math can be off sometimes, too, so.
And I would say what's important to be heard there is that, that next step to fifty-four million costs you just fourteen dollars more per a hundred thousand of fair market home value.
I think that's a really good point. Math is hard. And so, I think it's really important that we're showing people what that really means. What does this really mean? How is this really gonna impact you? Who's, I shouldn't word it like that, why wouldn't you be willing to spend a hundred and fifty dollars a year for your, for our kids? That's what they need to see. What your home value is, and what that truly means. So that you're paying it, once a year, a hundred and fifty dollars for your kids. The reason I said a hundred and fifty dollars, is I quit Googled the average home value in Langley County, and it's two hundred thousand dollars. So, I think we need to really point out what that looks like. And so you can find yourself on the grid and say, "Okay, this referendum, my house is this, this is how much I'm gonna have to pay."
And I would piggyback off that, just touching a little bit about the importance that you said about what we're doing or not doing, as far as community engagement is concerned. And my, my personal feeling is that, that's where we need to just go overboard, and really start communicating more with the, with our families and our residents, and then explain those things to them, and show them those tables. How much can you afford? Because, I mean, I think some people would say, "I'll go twice that," you know what I mean? Whether it's important to that, I know that's not how it works, but showing them exactly what those dollars mean, and what you can afford. Can you, can you, can you do a hundred a year? Can you do one fifty a year? Because, I just think, it brings a little, it makes it more personable for the pers, for that individual or that family. And I think that has a lot to do with our engagement efforts.
And Bobby and Kristen, I don't want to step on Lori's toes, because this is her work with, with the team. But, what I will say is that, having done three of these, the reality is, what makes it most personable, is having kids out there telling people what it means to have a new elementary school. What it means to, what, what, however you determine, and you need to determine beforehand, how the capital maintenance dollars are gonna be used, but what that means for kids at the middle and high school. That means a lot more to me than, oh, nothing against the tax impact, but at the end of the day, the tax impact is, I can either afford it or I can't. But if, but if I'm not sure, or if I think I can, but now I know what this means to kids, how this makes a difference in their lives, that means a lot more to me.
Well, and in all reality, we have a lot of voters that aren't taxpayers. You know, I mean, they're not property owners, they're not paying.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay, yeah, yeah.
That's a big handful of voters.
Yeah.
Yes, but however, that does come back to them, because if the taxes go up, then that, their rents go up. Everything goes up according to, you know, the tax. So, while they may not pay directly property tax, they still are paying.
John, did you want to see the sixty-one million dollar one as well?
Yeah, and, let me, Jake, is the football field bleachers here somewhere? Are they anywhere in this?
No.
Nothing. Okay, so that's nothing to do with this?
That's separate.
Okay.
Anybody have anything else for me? Otherwise, I'm gonna do my three-hour drive home.
Thank you.
Hopefully, nobody else has a three-hour drive tonight, so.
So, you don't feel that good about this third option? It would make you way more nervous than?
So, John, I will tell you that I tend to be very conservative in my approach to these, and I was conservative when I was in Middleton. All right? We, I'll just run through all three, and again, these dollar amounts don't mean anything, because every community's different, right? But, we, we passed the largest referendum in Wisconsin in two thousand and twelve at sixty million. We passed with sixty-five percent. Could've we gotten more than sixty million? Yes. But, we didn't, I, I, I told the community, "We're gonna have to come out again. We're a growing district, so a different situation than, than yours. But we're a growing district, so you're gonna hear from us again in four to six to eight years." Six years later, we were back. We passed the largest referendum in Wisconsin, a hundred and thirty-eight point nine billion. To, basically, we rebuilt, rebuilt the whole high school, and we built a brand-new elementary school, because we were growing so much. But they hear from me, "We're gonna, you know, we're gonna be back in four to six years, probably need a third middle school." They didn't hear from me on that, one, because I retired, but two, because of the pandemic. So, now they're, now they're in a flat enrollment district. And so they're facing some of the same struggles other districts are, maybe not to the same degree, but they are. But we went and did an operational one. We asked for twenty-four nine million over four years, so basically six million a year or so, and we passed with seventy percent, because we only asked for what we needed. So, but again, I'm only telling you my experience. I'm not trying to influence you. That's the worst thing I can do. What did I tell you? Trust your data. The hard part about the data is, like I said, and I'll just emphasize it one last time, there's a bit of a conundrum for you. And it was one of the two districts I was just working, presenting to, same thing. In your case, more of your community will support forty-six million, because they, they look at it from a tax impact standpoint, and that's what they can afford. But your families with middle and high school kids want at least fifty-four million, because they want to see something for their kids as well. And that's the challenge you're gonna have to wrestle with over the next few weeks. I'm, it's just as simple as that. But I'm not telling you what to do. That's not my job. I didn't get voted in, so that's your job, so. Okay?
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Perry.
Thanks for the time, everybody. I really appreciate it. I really, I did enjoy the drive, but I'm hoping to get to Wausau before it gets dark.
Watch for the deer.
Because fifty-two was a little scary.
Yeah, watch out for the deer.
Oh, I already passed four by the way up here, and that was, that's why I was hoping to get there while it's late, I would say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye, bye. Safe travels.
More than four on the way there.
Jake, Jake, if we pass one of these second two questions, does that open up money in your budget, that we can, like, go to teacher salary, or do you still have all kinds of other expenses?
These are separate.
JD, I, I would say that, that, that general theory would be accurate. How that would actually dial out, it, it's really hard to say. You know, to say that it, it would allow us to increase teacher salaries or any one thing, or do, or do anything specifically, that, that's kind of tough, until you sit down and really, really work out those numbers, which is, you know, certainly something that we can work on as time goes by. But, I think that, yeah, and anytime that you were able to take capital improvements off the list, that in my opinion, as I've presented for a number of years, that should have been done already, it certainly makes it easier to balance the budget and, and, and do things that way, but it, it's really hard to say exactly, so.
How do you feel looking at these results? How would you vote, if you were me?
Can you, how do you feel, Jamie?
Overall, I was very encouraged. I, I was very encouraged. I, I really was, you know, looking at it, I, I was pleasantly surprised. I think that that really speaks volumes of what our community wants, and things that we need. It, it's good to see that, that level of support, not only in just the three options, but the other questions that were up there. I, I think that that's just a good litmus test, that, as to what we're doing is on the right track, and where we should go in the future. So, I was really positively encouraged overall.
I'm just gonna make a comment right now, that the phone's being passed around with a picture of the new middle school windows on it, so.
Took it today.
That's what's being shared.
Thank you, Jill, for saying that.
You see the new above the old.
They look really nice, Jake.
Thank you.
I, I just think that from, I think that, is it Mrs. Aberuski?
Yes.
Thing that she gave us, I think, we need to convince, I think we all know that our enrollment's gonna decline. So we need to convince people that a referendum would give our kids a better chance, and not dwell on expanding our enrollment right now, because the data doesn't show that, you know, so. I think we have to convince people that we just plain need it.
Also, declining, if all the kids came back to our district right now, who have opened and rolled out, we would not have a place to put them.
Right.
That is correct.
And for the sake of transparency, I think we should answer all these questions and public, put it in an article in the paper with it, or wherever we can share that on our website or whatever. But, possibly even, an idea would be like an open platform, where people could send a random question, and at some point, you know, on Thursdays at two o'clock, somebody answers those questions, or we take them and answer them for the next week or something. Because I think there's a lot of open-ended questions out there that the community has. So, I appreciate this, and I appreciate you asking.
I do believe that we do have a place for people to submit questions for the facilities task force, if I'm not mistaken, on our website, also.
That is correct.
Are we gonna put the survey results out there, or are we keeping those to the board, or what's our plan on that?
We have a follow-up meeting with Lori. I'm not sure if we've set the date, where we will talk more about what next steps are, because we also have a task force.
Right, right. What we'll do is, we'll do an informational piece about the results through a news release, and some social media, as well as put the results on your facility task force webpage. And I like to always follow up with a one-page, or like an infographic that gives the high-level results, so that you can share that throughout your community.
Lori, how's your gambling instinct? Would you just do option one, or would you do one plus two?
JD, JD.
Trust the data.
I don't know what, I-
I love your spirit, and you really talk to me, but I'm going to take the high road here of what I'm supposed to do, and solve, and say, "Trust your gut."
It's not obvious to me. When you say, "Trust the data," you say, "Does that mean you've, to me, you guys picked the cheapest one? Because it's the highest surveyed result?"
I think-
That's for the board to decide.
I, I-
I don't have any time to think on that.
As just one board member, one thing I struggle with is the historical decision-making of the board. So that's not, I'm not pointing out any one board or board member specifically, or administration, but simply that we have the capital improvement question included in this survey, because we have failed as a district to plan and budget for capital improvements. And, as just one board member, that component is important, I feel, because regardless of what occurs, we still have to have a plan to either budget for those capital improvements, should that not be on the referendum, or if it is, and it's passed in the referendum, what's our plan to maintain the buildings? Because that's what got us here to begin with. So, we can't repeat the same pattern we, as a district and community, have done that has gotten us to this point. So for me, that's very important, of how we are gonna be fiscally responsible from this point forward.
So you lean towards number two, or number three?
I don't, I lean towards, I would like our facilities to be the best that they can be for the students, that will provide our, our students and our staff the opportunity for students to learn at the highest level that they can, that will entice people to come to our district, that will bring students back into our district instead of open and rolling out. So in my perfect world, we wouldn't be in this situation. We wouldn't have to, to be where we're at. I would love to see all the needs met now, because then we can move forward with ensuring that we are fiscally responsible. It doesn't feel good to have to pick the priority when they're all priorities, because we also failed to budget appropriately for our middle school and high school. So in my perfect world, we meet all the needs, and continue then to move forward without repeating this pattern. I'm not saying what option I'm for. That's just, you asked what I'd like to see, and that's what it is.
And we have two shots in a year, right?
Yes.
So if you went the big first, the small second time. Just a-
So I'll say that, as a, as a parent, and as a community member, I would like to see how this is going to affect, how and the why behind how this is going to help our students have better academic achievement. How, you know, what is the details of that? How is, you know, teachers having-
What are the future outcomes?
Yes. How is the teachers having more collaboration space? How would that affect teaching? How will that affect my kid or future kids' learning? Great, you know, it's great if we build a new, shiny new school, but things internally can still be ran poorly. So I want to know the details of how that is going to increase our outcomes, right? And I think that's something that's really important, and it's, you know, it's easy to know that, maybe, if you're in the educational world, right? But, if you're not, if you're a parent or a community member, we need to explain that and tell that very clearly to them, and give them examples. The other thing is, is it possible, Lori, to maybe create like a calculator-type app or link on our website, so that people can come in and say, "Okay, my, my home is valued at a hundred and twenty-nine thousand this year. Going off of those numbers, how will this impact my property taxes?" Now, we also would have to have-
That is part of our, yes, that is part of our communication roadmap for you all, once you have a question on the ballot.
Okay.
Because I mean, we all have a separate calculator.
Because I think that's important, and, and, like you said, Kristen, you know, people want to know the specific, how is that going to directly affect me? You know, obviously, you have to have like a disclaimer on there, if, you know, is it PGA, or whoever does our tax assessments, right, if they increase everybody's property values again, then it's gonna be higher, but.
You know, Angie, one thing that you asked for is the, what does it look like?
You know, Angie, one thing that you asked for is the, what does it look like for collaboration for teachers? We have that answer, because when we moved the fourth and the fifth grade into the middle school, we have heard since we moved them there from Heather, as well as the teachers, how the improvement of the students have been because of the teachers being able to collaborate together in three to five minutes in the middle of the hallway, rather than waiting at the end of the day for all those teachers to go to one particular building when they're already worn out for the day. So we have seen student achievement already, just with our fourth and fifth grade, by moving all of them into one building.
Right. We have, we've heard that.
Yeah.
The community has not. That's what I'm saying.
Well, it's been presented at board meetings.
Well, right, but if you're not here, if you're not watching, then you don't know.
Correct, correct. So we have to get that information out.
Yes.
To piggyback off of that, Angie, they, we got four hundred some responses that said why they won't vote for this. So if we can, I know that's a lot, and you know, they're probably not all relevant or all have an answer, but I bet there's a good percentage of those that we can say, well, if we do this school, this is how that impacts your no.
Right, absolutely.
And so there's lots of, that's a lot of data right there. It's a good point, Angie.
And I'm just wondering one other question. Is communication going to elementary families through newsletters through each building? Or in middle school and high school? Like, you know, like, is there a newsletter going to families monthly, weekly? Do we know that?
So a routine newsletter, like from just the school, they send them out monthly.
Okay.
During the-
And then, and then-
During the school year, yes.
With those newsletters, are there links and communication to all of this information?
No, it has not been.
Why or why not? You know?
Yeah, I don't know why or why not, but there has not been, no.
Can we-
Because the more we can tell and show and get people connected. I agree. This is part of the engagement process.
Did we ever, the pictures or the two and three options, the capital items that would actually be improved? Did we ever get those online? I tried to send them to someone during that survey, and I couldn't find it. And then I just sent a picture of my piece of paper, but I-
Should be a double check, put a little pause in there.
Maybe you just gotta share those on the Facebook page or something.
We could, I would put those on that Facebook page as JD suggested, but then also put it up, make sure it's on the webpage as well.
Can you repeat what you asked?
The task force. What did you ask, JD?
You remember he handed out those pieces of paper, and it said the cost, and then it listed like the twenty or thirty items that would be covered under each.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay.
You know, the cost, because people were like, well, what's this eight million dollars for? And I was like, oh, it's on this list. Isn't it on the survey? And they were like, no, it's not on the survey. What's this for? So I sent him the picture, but it was-
What, Jake, would you be able to pull that up and speak to some of that? It's actually an important point of what are those items at the middle school and high school? If you, and it doesn't have, detail's helpful. I was gonna say it doesn't have to be in detail. But just an overview, because I think it's also helpful to share that it's not asking for new and shiny. It's asking for, these are the overdue, really boring, you probably won't notice. You know, visually, it's not something that's big and flashy, but it's a need that has been deferred, deferred, deferred. So I'll give you a second to pull that up.
Thank you.
To email it to Dustin, so he can put it on this slide.
And some of those were put on the mailers, like the secured entrances, because our schools don't have those currently. There's no way to actually lock it down. If an intruder gets in our buildings, it's, so that, that, I know that was on there. And asbestos abatement was also on there because of the number of asbestos that we have in our buildings still. And that did, that did go out to everyone. And I can't remember what was in that, the full-page paper thing.
I think Dustin's got it.
Okay, yeah, this is the sheet you're talking about, right, JD?
Yeah.
Yeah. It is, it is linked in there. I think that, I'll talk with Lori tomorrow, and maybe we can do a better quick graphic or something that you can see what the scope of the three kind of surveyed options was. It's within the documents, but it's, it's not very user-friendly.
Isn't it linked on our webpage also?
It, it is on our webpage.
Facilities Task Force.
Yep, it's just, it's not very user-friendly to quick-find that information, so we'll see what we can do on that. But yeah, basically, budget one is gonna be, I guess, we'll start with the, the new elementary school. That's the forty-six million. Obviously, that would, would be the option one that was surveyed. When you look at option two, you have the salmon or reddish-colored column. That's the phase one budgeting. So currently on the screen is the items that are at the high school, which are a lot of the hard surface replacement outside. A couple of select flooring replacements, window replacement, some masonry work, a fire alarm system replacement.
And Jake, a number of this is basic safety issues.
Yeah, they really are. Yep.
For me, things that stand out are replace booster coils. I don't know what that means, but that is like, you know, my point is, this isn't big flashy. This is, these are, these are functionality of the buildings to re-
You know, I don't, like, that one you just pointed out with the booster coils, that's really speaks to the whole HVAC system here at the high school. And that portion is not in the fifty-four million, that's in the sixty-one million. So that yellow column really speaks to the sixty-one million scope.
So what about like the carpet in the vault? Is that really necessary, or is that?
Yeah, I mean, from a safety hazard, yeah. I mean, there's, there's ridges like there is here that, it's a trip hazard. There's actually spots where the carpet is wore through, where there's been holes that we've glued back down. Yeah, made, made it work. It's, you know, definitely, it's thirty years old. It, it needs to be replaced.
I will say, on the, on the website, if you go into task force, what is it called?
Under community.
You know, yes, you go to community, and then you go to task force, but then you go into this, see the facility planning process. And then you go into conceptual solutions, and then you have to scroll down to see that. And then it, it is not very clear at all.
Yeah.
It's very hard to read on, on the website. So if we can make that, like you said-
Yep.
Infographic or whatever.
Even if you wrote a couple of sentences about each one of these, like you just explained. Because to me, I look at that, ah, I was just in the carpet for the vault for the dancer's side, and I was like, this carpet looks pretty good.
Well, and also you, it's difficult to even find facilities task force. You have to go to community and then down a menu, click that, and then you're into it. I think there should be something on our district homepage with an absolute link to the facilities task force. So people in our community can easily see what we're, what we're doing.
We should almost share some once a week now from here on out on the Facebook page, because I just, on Facebook too much, but at least people see those.
But I also want to remind you that we still have a very, very large portion of people who do not use our website or Facebook or anything electronic. We have gone way above and beyond. Jake has hand-delivered surveys, paper surveys, to people's homes that have called and requested, because they don't have access to internet, and that's what we want. We wanted to hear everyone's feedback. So I'm, I don't disagree with that, but we also have to think outside of just technology, because we have a lot of people that don't use it.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I was impressed. Not impressed, but I anticipated a high result for the newspaper, and it is considerably high for a newspaper, so I appreciate you sharing that.
Yeah, and I, I guess I just want to say thank you to all of the businesses in our community that helped share the little flyer that, that we printed off. And I asked if they would have them up by the cash registers. They were handing them out. There was one place that was putting in to-go, to-go bags with their lunch orders and stuff for us. So I mean, that really helped a lot. So I just want to do a shout-out to our community businesses that are, are helping, helping us get the word out as well. I agree.
Dave may have mentioned this, that our why, so I apologize if it's repeating. It's really important to make sure that we are sharing that when this started and the information gathering, it was pointed out that you do not come with a solution. And I, I wasn't, I have not been actively involved in the task force. So from what I see, it was a lot of information gathering and assessments to determine what the needs are versus we want this as the outcome, and we're gonna focus on the solution as, as opposed to getting that information.
Because you guys spent a lot of time, Jake, talking about, well, to fix up the three old elementary schools, it's gonna cost one million more dollars, correct?
Yeah, roughly, roughly that. It was one to two million dollars more.
Plus, you have to have somewhere to put the kids while it's happening, plus there's no room to do the construction.
Correct, yes. And then the size of the sites even when it's completed.
And no green space.
Yeah.
But the thing is, is that, that was an important step, that process that we had to go through, because like I've said before, I'm a person that I voted no to every single referendum in the past. I didn't want my taxes to go up. You know, I thought that, you know, school district can figure it out, make it work. And then when I got on the board, I took a tour of the schools and stuff, and I saw how bad they were. But then my mind was like, okay, well, we could add on. We could go up, or we could go out, or whatever. So I needed that process myself, and I know there's a lot of the community that thought, you know, was thinking the same way. Why can't you add on? You know, why do you have to, you know, especially with the cost of everything going up so much? It would be a better option than building a brand-new facility at, at this time. And so, yeah, we needed to go through that process so that we could answer that question and determine if that would be a viable option, right? So.
When we talk about the difference, if, if it would have been determined to do renovations on the current buildings, number one, to do so in the summertime would not provide enough time to complete the renovations, correct?
Correct.
The, yes.
Okay. Number two, we would not be able to do renovations on all three buildings in one summer, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then the third would be, even if any of that would have been feasible, the cost did not take into consideration physical placement for those students. Like, we would have to rent or secure a building. That was not within a, a cost. So that would not include like, I don't know, renting a space to provide education, and also would not include any busing cost differentials, because we wouldn't know that.
Correct. Those, those are construction costs based on normal construction conditions.
Thank you.
Plus, Antigo does not have any kind of spaces like that, so.
Do you, you guys want to talk about this piece of paper a little bit? The-
JD, I look, I was looking at this paper closely as, as everybody was discussing. A lot of these questions are already answered and have been answered in the past. It would just be a matter of Mrs. Oginski and her team to answer these questions, because we, we give the third Friday count enrollment out by the school every year, whenever that report is done. We know exactly how many students were lost to Mattoon. We know the students that are going to Peace Lutheran and St. John's. All of these, most of these questions have been answered in board meetings in the past. But this is a great tool to have it all together. I'm not saying it's not a good tool. It is. But they've been answered, and Mrs. Oginski can have this data at the, at the central office very quickly.
So I guess to Scott's earlier point is, it's not so much about the declining enrollment. It's about improving the quality of the education, right? That was your main, because we know we're gonna have declining enrollment. If we could stop it, it'd be great. That'd be very difficult.
Yeah, and if we want to, we need to invest in our community. I mean, it's, it's time. I think my sister and I were talking about this the other day. We're at a point in our community where we either, we either kind of fold the tent, or we make a run to get better.
Yes.
And I think we need to make a run to get better.
One question I was asked was, what is the plan, what does the district have as a plan if there is no referendum that passes, regardless of option? Because your needs are still there, and even more significantly. So I don't know if there is an answer to that, to that at the moment, but it is, I think, a fair question to also provide within transparency and communication with the community. Because the need doesn't go away, the cost doesn't go away, but there is also no resolution to the needs.
I think we'll, we'll be telling, we'll be bringing those mobile units back that we got rid of. I mean, what else couldn't we do?
Well, I, I just want to say that, you know, if our, if our scores don't improve, right? If our academic achievement stays where it's at or continues to fall, which I don't believe it will. But if it did that, the worst-case scenario is the state DBI could come in, and they could like run things for a few years and see if they can correct the ship at that point. If they cannot, they can dismantle the school district. Meaning our kids would be shipped to Merrill, Oco, White Lake, Bowler, you know, Wittenburg. There would be no school district here. And what that would mean is, this, the Antigo community would, would be, would die. I mean, it would. We wouldn't be a retirement community. We literally would die, because our young families would not want to stay here and bust our kids all the way, you know, forever on a bus or have to drive them there. They're gonna move there. They're gonna move other places. We already struggle with keeping families here. That is the absolute worst-case scenario that would happen. And it, it, it can happen. The state has every right to do that. So just, so everybody knows that.
Good, good point. Glenda, can you talk about, to the survey responses that we're talking about discipline? Do you want to respond to that, or how we're working on that, or?
Sure, yes. So one of the things that we started working on was putting back in place PBIS. And when I say PBIS, I say that as a system, not a, we're gonna celebrate everything to death. But this is what it looks like to walk in the hallway when you are a student in Antigo schools. Every building, every business, there are procedures and expectations, no matter where you are. And we had kind of gotten away from being very explicit about that. And so we did that already, and we are, we brought back Monday morning meetings where you have a focus. Is that a fix? Is it the, the be-all, end-all? No. But is, it is a step in the right direction, because we did at one point in time when I was here before, we had a very vibrant PBIS system in place, and it was very well-performing. So getting back to those basics, and I think that, you know, they're working to redo the student handbook at the high school. And knowing what's a non-negotiable and what, what isn't, and holding people accountable for that, because it's not an administrative, it's an everybody thing. Everybody, all teachers, all instructional assistants, custodial staff, cafeteria staff. Everyone is responsible for helping with those expectations.
Do you get a good feel? I guess I haven't been in the buildings enough to know. Is the discipline more of a problem in the K3s or in the middle school? Or is it just the high school is so tough that it gives everybody this feeling that the discipline is bad? Or like, I mean, that would almost be a more interesting survey to the parents. Like, do you feel like at your school, the discipline is bad, or is it just?
Discipline starts at a very young age. So as they come up through the grades, if, if the discipline is not there, if the consequences are not there, then it just kind of snowballs into a bigger, 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 which is what we're seeing at the high school now. I, that's my opinion. So I think it needs to be addressed at all grade levels, but particularly the younger grades, because if they are, know what is expected of them, and know the consequences, and know that it will be same for all. You know, whether it's student A, student B, whatever, everybody has the same consequence if they're going to do that, that particular action, right? Then it, it won't snowball, then we can get it back on track. Um, then it, it won't snowball, then we can get it back on track, but it, we didn't get here overnight. It's going to take some time, and it, I think, you know, what Glenda said, how it's everybody's, the work of everybody, it also is the work that carries on bef- past the week one, two, and three of the school year, it has to be the whole school year, it can't be just the first few weeks of staying, you know, staying on them.
I have a real close friend who drives a bus, and he was going to, he's in his seventies, I don't, probably can't name him.
No.
Probably not.
I mean, I'm making sure, but, um, he was going to quit at Christmas, and he's coming back next year, because he said when those changes were made, his bus got better, um, the teenagers became more compliant, more respectful, he said the F-word was used once in a while after that, but they caught themselves, and they actually looked at him and said, sorry, Mr. Bus Driver. So he's, he's very positive about the changes that happened at the high school, so I think you're right that discipline starts at the lower level, but anytime there's a crack in the armor, especially with teenagers, they're going to take as much rope as you give them.
Yes.
I.
And I think the rope got tightened up at the end of the year, and I got to commend you for that.
Yes, thank you.
I didn't do it alone, I was just crazy enough to implement a cell phone policy.
No, I think, yeah, he, he's, he might drive for a couple more years now.
I hope he does.
That's a good deer.
No, he, he needs to retire.
I've heard feedback on lack of consistency between buildings and within the district, so I'm answering your question to the best that I can, um, J D, about behaviors, because that's, it's a common theme, so, lack of consistency, that does not mean that one school is doing poorly or multiple, it is that we are not consistent as our dis- as a district in our messaging and our expectations. Um, so consistency and follow-through, I also hear the, uh, the theme of not feeling supported, um, by administration. And I, I, I think that varies by the individual and what that means to them, but I hear that consistently too. I would say more specifically, not feeling supported by building admin for feedback, from what I've heard.
Yeah, I could echo that.
Glenda, you want to speak to that a little bit?
Well, we have some new building administrators coming in, so there will be some changes put in place, and, um, I also think that behaviors also impact teacher retention as well, so that, you know, that has to be, if students aren't able to attend, they're not able to learn, um, and also moving away from philosophies such as, students who are not able to self-regulate should be pushed into a classroom regardless, which disrupts everyone's learning, is also not something that we're going to be following as well. There's a time and a place for everything, and you know, as adults, if you are not in a good mood, you don't want someone saying, are you okay, do you want to talk about it, you just need time to regulate, and then when you're ready, join your peers. That's simple, you know, it's, it's not that no one is negating an opportunity for an equal education, but everyone is entitled to that education.
And it's not fair to push a kid into a room that he's not ready to be in, or she, that student's not ready to be there. I mean, that's just not fair.
And currently in our situation, we don't have any of these independent learning areas to bring this conversation full circle, so there we address behavior and how that can be addressed by having a different building and better spaces for learning.
That is accurate, there is no place in the elementaries particularly to have those areas for students to have a regulation spi- spot, you're exactly right.
Yes, and the impacts on the other students in the building, and the teachers for that matter, with their ability to maintain focus for instruction during that time. I want to point out one thing, um, that as a community member in the past, I would get really frustrated by, we've answered that already, or the information's available, so as a board member speaking, and a parent and community member, I think being able to recap and highlight, um, in a condensed manner, things like this that are brought to us for important questions from the community is helpful, and answering that and bringing it back to the community as opposed to, um, and I'm not saying that this, this was the intent, but as opposed to saying it's been available and we've been transparent to give our Third Friday Counts, if this is what the community is, is saying is helpful, let's respond and get it out there too, because it's true, we have discussed these topics, this, these things have been brought forth during board meetings that are recorded and things like that, but who cares? Get it to me in a condensed manner, so I can see what is important to me as a community member.
Lori, what are the next steps? Is she still with us?
So, Glenda, we have questions, um, Danny?
Uh, the next steps from where we are from tonight.
Yes, so the next steps are, um, we have a note here that we're going to huddle up with Glenda and her team, to make sure that we get out a few of the communications as a follow-up to the survey, so that we can be really transparent about the results with all of your community, and the different ways that they need to receive that communication, based on the challenges that are present in your community. Um, and then we will want, I know we, we were intentional to try to invite, uh, Task Force members to tonight's meeting, so that they can hear the survey results at the same time that the board was, but I think that we need to have a next meeting scheduled now with that Facilities Task Force, following the survey, that they can come forward with their report and final recommendations for you all. Um, and then you have time between now, and I think the date is August twenty-seventh, to decide if you want to put a resolution on the ballot or not, and so you can work with Glenda to continue to have this as an agenda item for you all as you move forward, and we'll get your advisors in terms of putting together sample resolution language once we have good direction.
I believe we have a meeting with the Task Force set for the twenty-fifth, right?
Twenty-fifth, correct.
Which is next Tuesday.
And a special call.
And then the following night, we have a special call board meeting, uh, to go over and the information from the Task Force from their recommendation on the twenty-sixth.
What month are you talking, Danny?
Next week, next Tuesday and Wednesdays.
I just thought you meant August.
And I'm not hoping for Tom to try to call me asking what I'm going to do, I just want you to be clear.
So Lori, are you, uh, so for the actual questions, the wording, like, do you give us multiple options that we can try to? I just heard, remember vaguely in the past, oh, this question wasn't clear, or it was too vague, or?
For the resolution.
Yeah, like, I just feel like I want us to have some options, so we can argue about it a little bit before we just pick one, because if we try to wordsmith it while we're sitting here, I'm sure we'll screw it up, but if at least there's a couple of different ways to look at it, yes, we try that before, it's hard to have eight people write a paragraph.
I, I think what's going to happen, J D, is if, if it's scheduled on the twenty-sixth for us to make a re- a referendum decision, we're probably going to pick one of the options, then we have basically almost a month and a half to two months for the resolution to be written, drafted, and approved.
Correct.
Yeah, to your, to your point about, like, how come, like, these questions can be, um, typically those questions are given by an advisor, and I don't know, Kelly, if it's in the room, um, if Kelly's in here, who you would all have put typically school districts in a spat of our book calls, Brady, to draft the resolution language, um, so that it's, it's in the format that it needs to be. Um, but what we've done to support the level of complexity, what labels are written, is we try to share that language well enough through a number of our communications to your family and your community members, so that they know what question looks, and how we interpret it when they see it.
We're meeting with them on the twenty-fifth as well, to begin that discussion.
With Corals and Brady, or with, uh?
Yes.
Perfect.
Jake, did you get any?
We have a meeting, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Did you get any follow-up from Kelly on the, on the tax increase part, like, how the, because we had the, we raised our low-revenue ceiling enrollment last year, and that's going, so now we're going to get more state aid, but then we add this seventy-six cents on about how that's going to shake out, she's not here, so I guess I can't ask her, but just to make sure we're clear on that, because when we get into secondary aid and tertiary aid, and then I start to get really confused.
Yeah, I, I, I don't want to speak for her.
I have some work that I have been doing with your advisor to try to see if we can get that label presented to us in a way that we can make it more acceptable to your stakeholders there, um, make it visual, so that everyone understands how that state aid supports the taxpayers.
Okay, yeah, I just, yeah, I just remember Tim used to bring that graph up, and he'd say, well, this is the tertiary aid portion, and this is the secondary aid, and if this, the state spends this much money, we'll be in this one, and if it spends this one, we'll be in this one, and I just was always confused, so I just wanted to make sure we could confuse everyone equally.
Understood, absolutely, so we're going to try to make that super easy for everyone to understand.
And Lori is working with Eric from PMA to be able to create some visuals that make it clear to everyone how the state aid is going to support us in the survey, if you recall, the language talked about how the state would cover a portion of that, so that's, that's some of the work that she's doing.
All right, is there any other discussion on, uh, the presentation? We have gone down a lot of different trails here tonight, had great discussion.
I just have one more comment.
J D still doesn't have his answer for the recommendation from anybody. So he's asked several people.
Perry, Perry's already made it to last, I'm sure.
Yeah, Perry's, Perry's asked all the deer, Bobby, go ahead with your, one more question.
I just wanted to say that it's not a question, it's a comment, that I found the survey myself to be very enlightening and informative, and I was encouraging every, after I read it, I mean, as soon as I got it, I read it thoroughly, but I encouraged every person that I came in contact with to, um, I'm not saying even if you didn't fill it out, but to please read the information that was in there and learn about the situation that we're in.
I had several people say that they were, they were happy with the openness, that's the word that I kept hearing, the openness from the district, and I thought that was encouraging to do that.
If we can put every piece of communication together with that kind of clarity, I think we'll be in good shape.
Yeah, okay, having said that, I will entertain.
At what point does, if, I don't want to be pessimistic, but if a referendum doesn't pass, then what, like, at what point does that come into the discussion, because as a Task Force member, which I am not, um, how do you make a decision of what the recommendation is to the board without knowing?
Plan B.
Yeah, I mean, I would assume you have to look at how it's going to impact raises, or ability to give raises, total positions, staff to student ratios, I say that very broadly, um, and not specific to any one thing, but where does that come into play in terms of the Task Force bringing forth a recommendation to the board?
As well as grade-level configurations, because that would be another consideration, because we are bursting at the seams in our elementaries, so.
I think one thing to keep in mind, as we work forward with the Facilities Task Force and with you all, that, you know, right now we're talking about the capital referendum process, uh, and operating referendum, and so the two are separate, right? So when we talk about, you know, what would be the result or consequence of not passing a referendum, and that is the direction that you all decide to go, um, that would be an impact for your facilities moving forward, not on your operations. To that point as well, I think Jake made a good connection for you all a little bit ago about, um, maybe that doesn't impact staffing directly, but indirectly, you know, as we do budget planning processes, it could impact the capital home, project budget line in your operating referendum, you know, our operating, uh, plans, so, um, in terms of, like, how does it affect staffing? And operating, and things like that, that's a separate bucket of funding, I think we just want to be very clear as we're talking forward.
And I appreciate that feedback, and that makes sense, it, and the, helping the community though, to understand the differences, which is what I'm actually sending an email on right now, um, capital versus operational referendums and stuff too, because you, you're going to ask voters if they're willing to increase their taxes, and you're also, to make a well-informed decision, how is this also going to impact you as a resident taxpayer, either way?
I mean, as, as I'm listening to what Lori's saying, and what, um, you're saying, Joel, like, it could also impact, like, class sizes, so then, you know, class sizes could go, you know, quite a bit more, if, you know, and then we would also lose, that would mean we would lose, I can't remember what it's called, some?
Oh, AGR.
AGR aid from the state, which then would last, you know, take out, more money away from us, and, and so it's just like a big snowballing, you know, mess, really.
Got it.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn if nobody has any other discussion.
So moved.
Motion's been made to adjourn, all in favor of adjournment, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, let it be known by saying aye, and we are adjourned.